Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council is reconvening from closed session. There is nothing to report. And I'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of the City Council at 6:35 PM. Let's call the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting to order on Wednesday, April the 10th, at 6:35 PM. And Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable, Channel 14, on Friday, April 12th, at 1:00 PM, and Tuesday, April 16th, at noon. It is being closed captioned; it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. The City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Winn.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And next item.
That'll be the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, so this is my chance to pick on our top cop in the city of Elk Grove, since he just announced that he's retiring, which, you know, I'm still kind of upset, but I understand if you put in 34 and a half years, you deserve to retire. So why don't you lead us in pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and a home, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, at the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the Council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And next item is approval of the agenda. Councilmember Soon, you had a...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we had a loss in our community recently. Ellen Kramer, she was the Director of the Junior High Ministries at Sun Grove Church, and she changed the lives of literally thousands of kids who are at risk. And we've asked, I asked that we close the meeting tonight in her honor.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Looking for a motion.
So move.
Got a motion, second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstention. All right, next item.
We have no closed session. Items under Section 3 of our agenda, which will take us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring April 2019 as Fair Housing Month.
All right. Mr. Foley, are you here?
I am.
Come on down. So I'm going to ask the City Council to join me, but I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, which has been passed by the City Council. Fair Housing Month, April 2019. Fair Housing Month is celebrated each April across the United States, and this year, we celebrate the fifth first anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968. And whereas the fundamental goal of government is to eliminate discrimination and assure the rights of every resident to buy and rent a home without regard to race, religion, sex, national origin, disability, family status, age, source of income, sexual orientation, gender identity, marital status, immigration status, and first language. And whereas, as we recognize Fair Housing Month, it is timely that we reflect on the importance in communities, states, and the nation to affirm several rights and oppose bigotry and discrimination. Whereas the city of Elk Grove affirms every American has the right to live with dignity in any area they desire without fear of discrimination and supports state, federal protection against discrimination in the sale and rental of housing. And whereas the city of Elk Grove supports the education of homeowners, realtors, landlords, property managers, homebuyers, and tenants regarding their rights and responsibilities under federal and state fair housing law. And whereas the city of Elk Grove is proud of its commitment to fair housing, recognizes the need to affirmatively promote fair housing in its policies and practices, and will continue to work to identify and remove impediments to fair housing choices. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims April 2019 Fair Housing Month and confirms its commitment to ensure there is equal access to housing for every member of our community. So, Councilmembers, would you join me in presenting this proclamation?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, my name is John Foley, Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Health Housing. We have a number of different programs we work with you on through the year, trying to help people who have actually ended up on the streets to get back into housing. This is a program called the Renters' Helpline that works with folks who are housed and tries to help them to avoid falling into homelessness. We've had over 300 people of your community call us in the last year who were in desperate situations, who didn't know how to talk to their landlord about a problem with rent, who felt like their landlord wasn't treating them properly about maintenance or repair issues. We've had issues where people, disabled folks who had service animals, were not being accommodated by owners who didn't realize that a service animal, you have to let them have a service animal as part of their medical condition. So we have a chance to educate landlords, have a chance to educate tenants about their rights and responsibilities. What we don't have is any money to help them when they can't make rent. And of course, that's the biggest problem that your constituents have, is a challenge of finding affordable housing here in Elk Grove. We appreciate the support that you've given us and others to build affordable housing and to try and expand the range of options, the housing options that people have here in town. But it's a challenge regionally and throughout the state, as you know. And we hope to continue to find ways to work with you on that issue, to try and help your constituents, to be able to stay your constituents instead of having to move out of town. So thank you again for your support on this, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item.
Just to note, items 4.2 and 4.3 are going to be coming at a future date. Item 4.2, the city manager will be providing an update during his report on the Caltrans Kasumnas Bridge replacement project. And item 4.3, the trials committee update due to some scheduling conflicts, is going to be moved to a future agenda item, or a future regular meeting. With that, that'll take us to item 4.4, which is the new hire introductions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, we have a number of new employees we'd like to introduce, as well as some promotions. So I'd like to first invite our police chief to come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman, Mayor, Council. It's my pleasure tonight to have another opportunity to introduce you and the public to our newest hires in the Police Department, and also to those that have been most recently promoted since the last time that we've met. So I'm going to start with the new hires. And first one is Madison O'Connor. There's Madison. There's Madison behind me. So Madison's been here before. She came the first time when we hired her as a police trainee, and then we sent her off to the Police Academy, and now she's graduated from the academy. And she's back working as a police officer in the community. Just as a reminder, Madison graduated from high school locally. She's been a part of our department since she was 16. She was an explorer for a number of years, and then we hired Madison as a community service officer, then a police recruit, and now she's a police officer in the field training program. Madison started as a police officer February 6th of this year. Next up is Justin Brazil. There's Justin, right there. Justin also graduated from the academy with Madison, so he's been previously introduced as well. Justin was previously a teacher and graduated from the Sheriff's Academy with the Most Inspirational Recruit Award. And I should mention, to go back and brag about Madison for a second, even though she's not going to appreciate me doing this, she actually got the top recruit award in their entire academy class. She was, did a fantastic job. Next up is Officer Jasvi Singh. There she is. Jasvi started with us on February 14th of this year, and she went to the Police Academy at San Joaquin Delta College. And prior to that, she was also a reserve explorer, excuse me, with our department for almost five years before going to the Police Academy. So we're happy to have Jasvi on as a police officer. Next up is Officer Juan Ortega. There he is, there's Juan. Juan started with us on March 18th of this year. He is pretty much born and raised in Stockton, went to high school in Stockton, then on to San Joaquin Delta College. Prior to coming to work with us, he served as a student service officer and a campus safety officer at Delta College. So we're happy to have Officer Ortega on board. Not with us tonight, and behind me is a police trainee, his name is Kevin Finkus. Kevin is in the academy as we speak, and so we'll be bringing him back at a future meeting. Next up is Officer Udyev Mora. There he is, right behind me. Officer Mora started with us on March 18th, born and raised in Stockton, went to high school there, and then on to Sac State University. And prior to joining us, Officer Mora worked for Stockton PD for about a year and a half before we were able to lure him here to Elk Grove. So happy to introduce all of those new hires to you all. Next up, we have several people behind me who have been promoted since the last time that we did these introductions. First up is Alicia Narande. There she is, over there. Alicia was recently promoted to the position of Senior Animal Services Officer in our department. So we're proud of Alicia and congratulate her on her promotion. Next up is Jerry Skibby. There's Jerry. Jerry is, I want to make sure I get yours right, Jerry, I always mess it up. Jerry's been promoted to Animal Care Supervisor, which is one of the new animal shelter positions. So prior to that, Jerry served as an Animal Control Officer, Animal Services Officer with our department, and he promoted up into that position recently in January of this year. And next up, Sergeant Brian George. Many of you might recognize Sergeant George, he's been with us since 2006. He was promoted to Sergeant in March of this year. Brian's got a wealth of experience, he's been a longtime detective, field training officer. I mean, Brian's had a part in training probably, you know, nearly all, if not, at least half of the police officers that are out there, Brian had a hand in training. So we're very happy to promote Brian to Sergeant. Next up is Sergeant Reggie Williams. There's Reggie behind me. Reggie also has a lot of experience. He started with us in 2011, worked previously at Sacramento Police Department and... Where else was Reggie? Ronard Park. Ronard Park Police Department, yeah, thank you. So Reggie promoted in March of this year. Also, he was a detective just prior to his promotion, a lot of experience, very happy to have Reggie on board as a supervisor. And our most recently promoted sergeant is Nate Lang. There's Nate. There's Nate. Many of you probably know Nate. Nate started with us in 2011 as well. He was a detective just prior to his promotion to sergeant, which took place on March 17th of this year. So we're very happy to have Sergeant Lang on our supervisory team. And last, but certainly not least, is Lieutenant James Fuller. There's James on the end. I'm sure you know James. James has been with us since 2006. He's had a lot of experience. He was a supervisor of our pop team for a time, he was a detective supervisor until his promotion to lieutenant in March of this year. So we're happy to have James on the management team. He's already digging in and helping out tremendously. So with that, I just wanted to have the opportunity to introduce these folks to you. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it. And I'm sure we have somebody else up next. Thank you. Welcome, congratulations.
Bob Murdock, come on up, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'd like to introduce Shoeb Arari. He is our new Senior Civil Engineer. He's going to be working in the Engineering Services Division, doing construction management for Capital Group. He comes to us, he was a senior civil in St. Eusthain County in their design group. He has 10 years of experience, bachelor's degree from UC Davis and MBA from Drexel. And he, his wife, and their twin two-year-old daughters are actually Elk Grove residents. So really, he's been doing a great job, he's been here about three weeks, we're just thrilled to have him here, so thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. And Brad Kane, our Finance Director.
I am pleased to introduce Isabel Gonzalez. She's the city's newest accounting team member. She brings to the city 15 years of experience with accounts payable, which is good for us, since her new duties with the city is accounts payable, so that really is a good She is not only quickly learning the city's processes, she brings the added benefit of being bilingual, which we also appreciate, because that is needed from time to time. Isabel lives in Lodi with her husband and two daughters, and enjoys traveling and spending time with her family. And if you could join me in welcoming Isabel to the city.
Welcome. All right, that's it. That's it, all right. Welcome, everyone. Looking forward to a wonderful career here in Elk Grove. I certainly believe that you guys have picked the right employer to work for. So let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 5, Public Comment.
Right, first speaker that we have lined up is Mark Graham. Following Mark is Maureen Craft.
And Mr. Graham submitted a PowerPoint presentation, which he did submit within the 24-hour policy for the city of Elk Grove, so I have that pulled up.
All right, so long as it's within three minutes, same rules apply, hasn't changed since the last meeting. Please be respectful of the other members of the public who are signed up to speak. At three minutes, you will hear the timer, and you have 30 seconds to wrap up. Once your 30 seconds is up, please allow other people to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham. You know I live in the city. It's good to see all five of you here tonight. Good Lord, I was supposed to get this started. These are pictures of a new cell tower that is located about 300 feet away from the east fence of the Lithadona Elementary School. It's near a school, it's in a residential neighborhood, and it's right in a park. This should not be permitted. I'm requesting a copy. This is the Public Records Act request of the application and the permit issued for that thing. Now, I had a conversation with the city attorney today, which took a long time to get to it, but it was a fruitful conversation, although somewhat disappointing. One of the things concerns Mr. Hobbs expressed was that he said his job is to prevent the city from being sued as it moves forward with 5G cell antennas. Now, what is worse than being sued? In my opinion, worse than being sued is putting in place, going down the wrong road, and basically acquiescing to the demands and requests of the wireless carriers because you were afraid to do the right thing and because you were given bad legal advice. There are higher priorities than avoiding being sued. The city is going to face massive liability if you go down the road and allow unfettered access to our streets and the public right of way for these things. The liability will stem from the fact that eventually there will be sufficient data that proves that these cell antennas put out radiation that is hazardous and harmful to people. And the city, by partnering with the carriers on this, will incur huge liability. It's an issue the city should look at and consider. I'm asking the Council to get involved in three ways. Complete the one hour of research that I asked you to do a couple meetings ago, which was going to be 30 minutes of research on your own time, on the health effects on the industry side, and 30 minutes on the residence side. I'm also asking you to do another hour of research, consisting of 30 minutes on what other cities have done on this exact issue, and 30 minutes of research on what the city's powers really are, vis a vis state and federal law. Now, I'm recommending that the city put in place a moratorium on cell antennas. And you can do that, these are the basic requests that we have, put in place a moratorium on cell antennas. You have a very strong basis in state and federal law. This is something, if you look at the Government Code, Section 65858, that's your basis in state law, among other things. And I'm going to send you a copy of the conference report on the 1996 Telecommunications Act, which had to do with the, it was the legislative intent behind this whole thing. Also, the city new webpage on 5G cell antennas has, it's not, it's good in some places, but there are four problems with it. It fails to solicit the input and opinions of your residents, it fails to mention what other cities have done that have faced this exact same situation, it fails to mention health effects. Health effects are the issue. Health effects are the issue. Almost every resident that has spoken to you on this issue has told you that, I'm talking about Elk Grove residents, that health effects are the issue. And that's, it's been the case in other cities, and that's according to the scientific research as well. The city's webpage fails to mention that, and it presents a very false and misleading picture of the city's power to regulate. It should say that the city has the power to regulate these things on the basis of house values and aesthetics and the minimum technological requirements for each carrier's system. You really do have the power for that, and you should not sell your powers out.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Local control is a big issue. Please maximize and exercise local control.
All right, our next speaker is Maureen Craft. All in Maureen Craft is Kathy Engel.
Good evening, Mary Lee and Councilmembers. First, I want to say congratulations to Chief Noblet, and I want to thank him for being one of the most easiest people to work with in the city. I just want to thank you just for always being available to us to speak with us, and congratulations on your retirement. With that said, his position is one of the most important positions in the city of Elk Grove. And when he was hired in 2016, it was a great hire. However, going forward with our next hire, we would really like to see a nationwide search. We would really like to see candidates of diversity. Elk Grove is one of the fastest-growing cities, we are one of the most diverse cities, and we would like to see candidates that reflect our demographics. We would also like to have, I worked with Councilmember Nguyen and Councilmember Hume on our Diversity Committee, and we would like to have at least one person sit on the hiring panel when those people or candidates are identified that we would be moving forward with. We would also like to have meetings around the city with our residents with the top two finalists. I think it is very important, before we hire the next police chief, that our residents get a chance to ask questions. And they need to feel comfortable with who will be our next police chief, and be comfortable with his or her vision of Elk Grove and their vision for our safety. So those are some of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Kathy Engel.
And Ms. Engel submitted a video and some slides via PDF that she'd like to display during our...
Can I actually, do I see Mark, I can actually, like, I can control those, or can scroll through them?
Yeah, I think you have the monitor up there, and if you just pull out the drawer that has the keyboard...
Oh, okay.
And you would be able to use the mouse to open up files and go from there.
Oh, okay, so I do this? I'm sorry, I'm not very technical.
Hold on, let me patch it over. And you get, the video file is down on the bottom of the screen, in the middle.
Okay, oh, okay.
And then your slides will be the one immediately next to it.
Okay, great. Oh, that's the response one. I guess you're going to see the response first. Okay. So...
.........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
There are no additional speaker, so let's move to the next item.
That'll take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
All right, several items to report on this evening. City Council, Vice Mayor Hume brought up at the last meeting a project that Caltrans is working on relating to the replacement of the underpass over at the Kasumnas River Bridge, and we've contacted Caltrans and asked them to come down and provide an open house for our community to learn more about the project. So that's scheduled for Thursday, April 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in the City Council Chambers. So the project, as proposed, would replace that undercrossing with an overcrossing, and would also replace the bridges that go over the Kasumnas River, and would eliminate the Essinger interchange that's there as well. So obviously, it's an important project for the city of Elk Grove, although it's not a city project, it's a Caltrans project, but we're staying involved throughout that project. There is an oil filter exchange event this coming Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00 o'clock at the Riley Auto Parts Store, 8751 Oak Grove Boulevard. We also have some upcoming road closures to announce. There's a lot of information on our website with more specifics, but this is relating to the Sheldon Waterman Roundabout Project over a four-week period. The landscaping project will be underway beginning Monday, April 15th. So next Monday, we're gonna start that landscaping project. City and the Kasumnas Community Services District have partnered on a fitness event on Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 to 5:00 o'clock at Elk Grove Park. Fit Fest will combine the Elk Grove Gauntlet and Kids Warrior Competitions with a family festival that will offer demonstrations and activities promoting a healthy lifestyle for all ages. Please visit the city's website for more information. Elk Grove PD and the Recycling and Waste Team have once again teamed up for Drug Takeback Day. Ensure your unused or expired medications are safely disposed of by bringing them to the Free Drug Takeback Day Event on April 27th from 10:00 to 2:00 o'clock right here at 8400 Laguna Palms Way. Like to recognize City's Human Resources Manager, Jackie Langenberg, who has been appointed as the President of the Northern California Human Resource Management Association. NorCal HR is dedicated to advancing professional education, providing its members networking opportunities, reaching out to all city human resource leaders, and being a resource to promote and advocate for the profession of human resource management and local government. Please join me in congratulating Jackie on being selected for this leadership position. Waterman Road Rehabilitation and Bicycle Lane Project, which was recently completed in October, is receiving the Transportation Project of the Year Award by the American Society of Civil Engineers on April 28th. So congratulations to Public Works. Youth Commission will host their Family Fun Day Event on Saturday, April 13th, this Saturday, from noon to 4:00 o'clock at Old Town Plaza. The event will include carnival games, music, food, trucks, a photo booth, prizes, and more. Couple other projects to provide brief updates on. Civic Center continues to make great progress. Pools are complete. CSD is training on the systems this week as they take over operation of the facility. Office furnitures has been installed. CSD will move in within the week, and the grand opening is scheduled for Saturday, May 25th. So we're really looking forward to that. One of the other things that you may have seen underway is our large art installation on the corner of Big Horn and Civic Center Drive. This is the Gordon Huether piece called Cloud Fountain, 25-feet-tall installation that was started on Monday, and a lot of work. I'm not sure if they got done today or not. I drove past late this afternoon, and they were still working on it, so it should be done, though, quickly if it's not already done. We're also working on finalizing the final music sculpture for the Commons area, so work, a lot of work is underway relating to public art at the Civic Center as well as the animal shelter. One final update, city staff is planning to hold a joint open house in May to inform stakeholders of the multiple projects planned around Old Town. There's our Railroad Street Project, as well as other projects, both private and public in the area. Staff plans to bring an item to City Council after this joint open house to provide an update on traffic circulation and planned projects in the Old Town area. That's an item that's brought up in the past about how the traffic is gonna flow and intersections that may need upgrades or modifications as far as signalization and so forth, so we'll provide that information to the council soon. That's it for my real updates, but I did want to just recognize the chief, and I know it was already mentioned, but for his many years of service to the city of Elk Grove and the law enforcement profession, really gonna miss him. Appreciate him sticking around a little while and helping us through this transition, and just, I can't say enough good things about Chief Noblet and what he's done for this community, really represent the city in the best, most professional way, and so we're really gonna miss you. I don't want to make it seem like you're leaving tomorrow, but I definitely wanted to recognize you, and you're gonna have some big shoes to fill, so thank you for your service and look forward to next phase of your life. And that's it for me. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? There are no questions. Perfectly clear. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, Councilmember Detrick.
Thank you, ma'am. A lot of good community events going on. Earlier today, at the Elk Grove Rotary and the Laguna Sunrise Rotary, they recognized Mayor Oscar from Concepcion de Ataco, our sister city. One for his 15 years of service as a mayor, and then the other is our collaborative effort with our two Rotary Clubs. We were able to raise enough funds for 22 homes to be built down there. I mean, it's a very, very modest home. I mean, by our standards, it would be considered more of the size of a garage, but for them, it's a huge, huge upgrade. And I think it's up to maybe Councilman Hume remembers or the mayor. I think it's close to, almost 200 homes have been built down there, and I think 123.
123.
123, I think, is the Elk Grove portion.
Oh, yeah.
So, but there's close to 200 homes that have been built down there, and 123 of them are from donations through the Elk Grove Rotaries and other personal donations from Elk Grove, so just phenomenal for those people.
If I may, Councilmember, I want to interrupt you a little bit, just because when you were mayor, you were one of the ones who spearheaded this, and I did so at the Rotary Luncheon, but, you know, I think it's pretty significant, you know, considering your work that you've done in the community, but not only that, but you've extended yourself above and beyond, and in partnership with the mayor of our sister city, this is all on you, and thank you.
Well, I think it's really, it's a collaborative effort of the whole council back in 2011, but really, the basis for the House has actually started with Oscar Ocon, and even before we became a sister city, but then it accelerated from that point on, and I believe Councilman Hume went down there probably.
I was on the exploratory committee in 2009.
Yeah, so I mean, it really has been a collaborative effort. I happened to be the mayor of the year that we signed the sister city agreement, and that's when they also got hit with a hurricane and floods at the same time, and I was able to go down there and find out all their needs, and our community just embraced it and rallied behind it, and just tell you, it's, once you've been there, it's so humbling, and you come back and realize the United States is the best country in the world to live in. Also went to the 10th Annual Walk to Remember and Memory Foundation, that was attending with Brian Hall. This is gonna be the last one that they're gonna do. There's rumors that there may be some other community members who want to pick up something similar to make that a continued remember for all the fallen soldiers. But a phenomenal event. I think the whole council was there, if I'm not mistaken, so that was pretty awesome. We all had a chance to interact and speak, and very, very touching. Had the 8th Annual Running of the Elk, which benefits the Elk Grove View Sports Foundation, had a walk, a run, I think there was a 5K and a half marathon, and I think Councilmember Soon actually ran in it.
Yeah, stumbled, maybe.
I was given a bad time, because I showed up in a pair of cowboy boots and was laughed at that I was gonna run in the cowboy boots, but that wasn't true. Taste of Elk Grove, that's sponsored by Laguna Sunrise, another phenomenal event at the Asian Sports Center. There had to be close to, I think, 1,000 people there. It was sell-out and always is a great event. We had the 1st Annual California Days that was hosted by the Historical Society, and they had one of the restored stagecoaches, and they actually picked us up at the entry to the park, and a few of the electeds rode the carriage in, into, by the pavilion where they had everything set up, the actual event. So unfortunately, the weather was not the best, had been raining quite a bit off and on, so the lawns there were pretty saturated, and I think it kept some of the people away, but it's something they're hoping that'll grow and be another trademark event for Elk Grove. And then the last one, you guys may have talked about it, because I was gone when this, before, from the last council meeting, but Lost in the 50s with a Peter Petty van. I know most of the council was able to make it, and that's hosted by the Arts Commission. Unbelievable event. Those are, it's their second one they've done, and I'll tell you what, you know, the first year was free, this year was a very nominal admission. It'd be easy, you know, a $25 to $50 ticket for what they put on, so if you guys ever have a chance, whether it's the public, staff here, or the rest of the council who hasn't made it, definitely, definitely worth it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Huen.
Thank you, sir. I will not repeat some of the events that Councilmember Detrick went through. So just to touch up on a few, I did go to the State of the City Event where our mayor here gave his address. I also attended the End of Watch Crab Feed where our Vice Mayor, Pat Hume, does a phenomenal job on the auctioning. How much did they raise that night?
Probably, just in the auction portion, I'd think somewhere about nine, 10 grand.
That's, in just a couple of minutes, that's wonderful.
Basically, just off of desserts.
Yeah, that's, eat cakes, right? Eat cakes, it's wonderful. And I held a community meeting right in here for my district, and I want to thank the chief for bringing his team out, and also Shane Diller, our code enforcement person. We were here for about two hours, and it was very engaging. Elk Grove Laguna Forums and Elk Grove Tribune both live fed the event. We had about 20 members that were in attendance with some great questions, and one of the things that was asked is, is this gonna, how often am I gonna do this? And at the beginning of the year, I said I'd like to host more of these and not have these community meetings be set up, just because of situations that happen, and so I'm looking to do another one at the end of this month here, and stay tuned for who our special guests and speakers are gonna be, but I want to thank the chief for doing an excellent job at fielding the questions. As you may have been aware or know, there are quite a few incidents that happened in our district. One was highly shared on social media on the ring where some folks entered in the house, and the ring camera caught them exiting with some firearms, and so they were able to address some of those questions. I wish more people would attend, because you can learn so much more when you have the police chief and his team all there to answer those questions. So hopefully, if I do this more on a consistent basis, we'll get more in attendance. And then something that I saw really interesting that is coming up is the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, the Sacramento Police Department, the Sac State Police, the California Department of Justice, and Federal Bureau of Investigation is doing an event where they're gonna call it Missing in California. It's gonna be held at Sac State's Alumni Association, and this is for family members or individuals who have lost some loved ones and have no idea or no clue on how to get information, whether it's through DNA testing, whether it's through, it's a search or not, but all of these bureaus are coming together and departments are coming together to help individuals that feel like they need that assistance. So have everybody there in one place for you. I know quite a few people that have lost loved ones and have no idea where to start. Many people go through Facebook and they put it out there, but here, if you go to this event on June 8th from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m., you have all of those jurisdictions and the bureaus that will be there to answer your call. April 15th is Tax Day, so on April 15th from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., the Vida Bus, E-Bus, will be in front of my office from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. to take walk-ins. If you or a family member make $65,000 or less, there will be certified tax preparers there to do your taxes for you. So anybody that is waiting to the last minute, please give me a call, and I can tell you where to go to get that done. And lastly, I will be hosting my summer youth program. Last year, I did it with our councilmember Darren Soon, and we were able to assist 45 young people throughout the Sacramento County. So some of the participants also came from our city here, get them placed into summer jobs, and if they wanted to continue to work there, we were able to, we were able to get them picked up. If not, they went back to school or whatnot. This year, I will be doing this jointly with our Assemblymember Jim Cooper, and we will host an orientation on the 20th at SASF from 10:30 to 11:30. So if you know any young people that have nothing to do this summer between the ages of 16 to 24, please send them our way, and we'll make sure we get them into a summer-paid job. And that's all I have, sir.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, ma'am. Many of you know I serve on our SACOG Board. I also chair one of the three subcommittees, which is the Policy and Innovation Committee. The biggest charge there is the Green Means Go Program, which we're advocating for the legislature to assign this region $400 million over a four-year period. That money's intended to fund projects that will help us reduce greenhouse gas in this area. Their resources board has given this Sacramento region a bit of a, you know, a little asterisk in not meeting its 19% greenhouse gas reduction targets if we do this program, because they recognize that we are not like LA and the Bay Area. So that's something that the committee continues to work towards. Also, I serve with Councilman, Vice Mayor Hume on the Sacramento Transportation Authority, and very happy to report that finally, after the work that the board's done, finally, the carpool lanes on I-5 from Sacramento down to Elk Grove Boulevard has been, the bids are open, and Caltrans plans to award that project in May and begin construction in July or August, so that'll be a great help for this region, adding another lane to I-5. And tomorrow is, we have our STA meeting, and then finally, I attended the 2020 Census Kickoff today, this morning, and it's, just want to, you know, state that it's just so important for all of us to participate in the census. There's a lot of money that comes from the federal government based on what they formula, based on our population, so for housing, transportation, healthcare, education, and so it's so important to participate in that. And as such, I want to ask the council if they'd be willing to adopt a resolution basically highlighting that. We can get, they have, you know, templates that we can offer, and I'd like to bring it back to have that adopted. Yumi Sarah is in our community, and she's one of the, one of the main activists for the census. Love to receive it.
Absolutely.
It'll be all right. Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I did attend the 10th Annual and Final Walk to Remember for Sergeant Brian Hall, and I hope that somebody does pick up that mantle and continue it on, because it's just a, it's a great thing to get out there and remember our fallen, but one of the things that struck me is I attended the first annual 10 years ago, and I spoke to a little girl who didn't even come up to my waist about that she should look at the fact of losing her daddy, not that somebody killed him, but that he died doing something that he wanted to do for a country that he loved. And I told her that I knew that, because I had come to that own revelation about my own father, who I lost as a child. And now that little girl is as tall or taller than I am, and her mom, or, excuse me, her grandma really thanked me, because apparently those words helped get her through some tough times, so. Also, as mentioned, was the Auctioneer at the End of Watch Crab Feed, and I gotta say, even though you're not leaving till July, chief, you know, your retirement was kind of a buzz in the room, and I can't say that everybody that I spoke to thought that you're the best chief the EGPD has ever had, but to a person, they all ranked you in the top three, so that's not too bad. The joke there is we've only had three police chiefs, so. And then I attended the RT meeting on Monday night, nothing of Elk Grove specific, but the most contentious item was whether or not to submit a letter of support for the SACOG $400 million ask, because the way it was teed up is transit could not apply for that money directly, and so with a lot of back and forth, we finally put it forward to show support, but to amend it so that transit can put forward some of that money if we can defend it. Yeah. And then the Rotary Meeting to Honor Mayor Oscar was great today. Our Sanitation Board Meeting was canceled, and so didn't have that. And then as far as future agenda items, I was contacted by a constituent regarding the elevated crosswalk on Emerald Vista, which I've had, I asked PD to go out and do some speed control out there, which that was effective for a time, but apparently that crosswalk in particular is causing some problems. This person had spoken with Brian Chapman about it. They had asked for flashing lights to draw attention. He said that was a cost of about 25 grand, and we don't have it in the budget, but he would look at the adequacy of signage. I thought maybe as they do at a couple of places down in Galt, if we use those breakaway pylons, it's a false median in the center of that, something that maybe narrows the travel lane or just alerts people to slow down. It's a citywide issue that people don't stop for pedestrians at crosswalks anymore, but if we can do something that makes that a little more visible, I'd appreciate that. And then I was contacted by the owner of the Benedetto Project there, it's in the Triangle area, and he had said to me, and I can't verify the timing on this, but that because we had initially signaled a change to the zoning designation, that he allowed his map to expire, and now that the designation remains the same, he was asking if there would be a way that we could grant him an extension on his original map, so I don't know, would that take a vote of council for this item to come back, or is that something we can just ask?
So I wasn't aware of the situation. We could take a look at it. It might be a matter of not so much an extension, but essentially a waiver of the application fee. If the map has expired, it's a little hard to re-up it, extend something that's already expired. Can we take a look at it and bring it back to you next?
Yeah, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind bringing it back. I thought it was a reasonable request, given that he kind of, the council giveth and the council taketh away.
Okay.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to add is the State of the City, for those of you who've missed it, I believe it is online, right? Jason, both Jason?
I believe it is, I just have to verify that, but I think the State of the City address, the video is up, yeah.
It is up, it is up, yep.
Okay, a number of people have asked, and I wasn't sure.
Homepage, there's a section at the bottom that says, like, current issues or current events, and there's a link there that says State of the City.
Okay, excellent. All right, that's all for me. Let's go to the next item.
That'll take us to Section 8, the Calendar Items.
Okay. Open for public comment, we have George Murphy, signed up to speak on 8.8.
Mayor White George is walking up, I need to recuse myself on 8.1.
Mayor, while George is walking up, I need to recuse myself on 8.1. On the minutes, I was not at that meeting.
Good evening, Brian. I want to congratulate you on your retirement. We've had a few personal interactions and you've been very accommodating. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the personal help you've given me. It's a real pleasure. Yeah, I'm here tonight to support consent item number 8.8. As you know, I pretty much bulldogged this thing all the way through. And I felt it was important to come here tonight and not only thank you, but also thank Public Works staff for the work they've done in, in reworking the speed control program guidelines. I'm in full support of the revised guidelines, presenting for your approval tonight. The guidelines now give the property owner who has some skin in the game, a choice as to whether or not they wish to participate in the speed control program. The guidelines also allow staff to expand the scope of the program to include streets and cul-de-sacs that may not be directly impacted by speed control installation, even though they may be directly impacted, even though they may not be adjacent to a selected street or requested street. I live on one of those cul-de-sacs, so I know the, I know the situation there, as do many of my neighbors. Finally, I think the guidelines now, they make it very clear how the program works. And it has mechanisms to keep all parties advised of the progress of the requested speed controls and where the program stands. So again, I want to thank Public Works staff for, for the job they did. I think it's a much better program now. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, we'll close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Mayor, I'll move consent, but I do want to make just a couple of comments. First of all, on item 8.8 that George just spoke to, that was the meeting I had to leave early and I was happy to see that that's the way you all decided to move forward with that program. And then on item, just before that, 8.7, I want to thank the deputy city manager for getting the language regarding extended producer responsibility included in the league's priorities. I think it's important to, to stop that at the front end as much as we can.
Okay. Got a motion? Is there a second? And let the record show that councilmember Adetrick is recusing himself on 8.1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post subvention? All right, next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with item 9.1, which is a public hearing that was continued from March 27th, 2019, to consider a resolution approving the 2019 Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program Nexus Study update and establishing the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program fees.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Lee, my name is Brandon Merritt and I'm a finance analyst with the city's Department of Finance. And I'm also the city's designated impact fees coordinator. I'm here before you tonight with this agenda item to request the adoption of an update to the Nexus Study for the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program, which funds Civic Center facilities as well as Bartholomew Sports Park. As you know, tonight you are being asked to adopt two fee program Nexus Study updates. This Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program update and the next agenda item which, following this, which is the update to the Nexus Study for the Laguna Ridge Specific Plan Supplemental Park Fee Program. What this slide you see before you shows is that between the two fee updates, the overall net increase for these two impact fee programs, if adopted tonight, for a single-family residential unit is $106 or 0.6% over the current rates between the two fee programs. Staff has met three times with the industry working group in which the particulars of the Nexus Study updates were discussed and staff received and noted feedback from the developers. The purpose of the Nexus Study for the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program is to demonstrate the fair share allocation of facilities costs between future development and existing development. The current Nexus Study is from 2006 and therefore contains some outdated facilities costs that needs to be updated, as well as build-out projections. In particular, staff have a much better idea now of the costs for the Civic Center facilities than they did back in 2006. So there are three main changes as part of these, this update to the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program. The Civic Center facilities are now more defined. For non-residential, residential persons, there is now a usage assumption of the facilities of seven and a half hours per week as compared to the former assumption of 10 hours per week. And finally, the administrative fee is being increased from 3% to 4%. So as I said previously, there are more defined Civic Center facilities in this update. The slide you see has the facilities from the 2006 Nexus Study, which are much more limited in their scope, but staff now know a lot more about the costs related to those projects as well as their design. In particular, council has approved capital improvement program funding plans for the Senior Center Veterans Hall and the Aquatic Center in Commons. So staff are able to plug those more exact cost estimates into the update, update to the Nexus Study. Similarly, Bartholomew Sports Park is now complete and staff knows exactly how much is remaining of the city's share of the park's construction costs. Moving on to the next change, staff revised non-residential usage of the park facilities from 10 hours per week to seven and a half hours per week. The reason for this is a reasonable inference can be made that employees could make use of the park facilities seven and a half hours per week, assuming a one-hour lunch break and two 15-minute breaks per day, times five days a week equals a total of seven and a half hours per week. This update is also consistent with the SEEPA fee programs methodology that council approved on February 13th, 2019. Finally, the administrative fee is being increased from 3% to 4% after staff reviewed a 10-year history of actual costs in the areas shown on this slide. Staff's analysis included historical, actual administrative costs going back to 2008 and then looked at the expenses we expect to have in the future and specifically over the next five years. And staff still saw that an administrative fee was likely to be exceeding the 4%. This analysis gives us confidence that a 4% rate is warranted. This slide just shows the difference between the current administrative fee and the proposed administrative fee. These final slides show future development's share of the eligible facilities as calculated in the updated Nexus Study. City staff recognized that the new $42.9 million in facilities costs allocated to future development would have resulted in a 280% increase over the existing fee, which would have been untenable for future, future development. Staff worked very hard to identify existing funding from existing sources such as the General Fund and Laguna Ridge CFD 2005-1 to apply that $30 million towards future development's responsibility to result in a more manageable 14% fee increase. Which does include the increase to the administrative fee. And finally, you can see the range of increases and decreases between the various fee categories through this proposed update to the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program Nexus Study. Thank you for your time and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions? There are no questions. All right. Thank you. At this time, I want to declare public hearing open. Want to open for a public comment opportunity, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment opportunity and declare public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation and direction.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post subvention? All right, next item.
That'll take us on to item 9.2. This was also, public hearing continued from March 27th and this is to consider the Laguna Ridge Specific Plan Supplemental Park Fee Program Nexus Study and fee updates.
Okay. Good evening again. Staff is before you tonight with this agenda item 9.2 to request the adoption of an update to a different, separate Nexus Study and fee program for the specifically Laguna Ridge Specific Plan Supplemental Park Fee Program, which funds the construction of parks and parkway facilities in the Laguna Ridge Specific Plan as well as the acquisition of parkland beyond the Quimby requirement of five acres per 1,000 residents. We saw this very same slide in the last presentation. And again, what it's showing is that there's $106 overall increase between the two fee programs. And in particular, I'd like to point out, for this Nexus Study update, you'll see that for the, the fee for a single-family residential unit is actually going down by 3% or $388 as compared to current rates. Again, you saw this slide as well. We've met three times with the industry working group in which this, the update to this Nexus Study was discussed. Staff also received and noted feedback from the developers on this update. The purpose of this Nexus Study is to demonstrate the fair share allocation of facilities costs and land acquisition costs between future development and existing development. The current Nexus Study is from 2011 and therefore contains some outdated facilities and land acquisition costs that need to be updated, as well as build-out projections. The update also contains exact costs for some facilities costs and land acquisition costs that have already been incurred since 2011. There are four main changes in this update to the Nexus Study. First is the switch to a fair market valuation instead of what was previously called the public land acquisition value residential in the 2011 Nexus Study to value parkland dedication through final maps or other mechanisms. The next is the same as the Laguna Ridge Park Fee, reducing the non-residential usage of the facilities from 10 hours per week to seven and a half hours per week. Third, staff has incorporated three non-residential fee zones for the non-residential developments paying these fees. And finally, the administrative fee is increasing from 2% to 4% in this Nexus Study update. Addressing the first change, the, the use of the fair market value, this 29 update eliminates the PlAVR calculation formerly used in the 2011 Nexus Study as a way to value parkland dedication through this fee program. This fair market valuation method is in line with the current method for valuing Quimby parkland. This proposed valuation method also has the benefit of eliminating potential discrepancies between market value and PlAVR valuations of parkland that could otherwise distort the fee program. Moving to the next change, staff revised non-residential usage of the park facilities from 10 hours per week to seven and a half hours per week, same as the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Program. Same, same reasonable inference as well in that non-residential employees are estimated to have a one-hour lunch break and two 15-minute breaks in which they could use the facilities. Which is also updated, consistent with the SEEPA fee programs methodology that council adopted in February of this year. Moving on to the next change, non-residential developments are now allocated facilities costs through three new fee zones in order to ensure a fair share allocation of the costs. As you can see on this slide, these are the new, three new non-residential fee zones. They are consistent with the Laguna Ridge Phasing Plan that was also used in the 2011 Nexus Study. And finally, the administrative fee increase, it's being increased from 2% to 4% after staff reviewed an eight-year history of actual costs in the areas shown on this slide. Staff's analysis included, included historical, actual administrative costs going back to 2011, when the fee program was initially adopted, and then looked at the expenses we expected to have in the future and specifically over the next five years. And staff still saw that an administrative fee was likely to be exceeding the 4%. This analysis gives us the confidence that a 4% rate is warranted. This slide is just showing the difference between the current administrative fee and the proposed administrative fee. So finally, we'll, this final slide shows that all of the LRSP supplemental park fees are going down, except for Zone 2 of the non-residential, which stays the same as the current non-residential fees. Zone 1 and 3, shopping, commercial and office fees are over 40% less than current fees. And for a single-family residential unit, we're seeing a 3% decrease over the current fees. Thank you for your time and I'm available to take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Absolutely clear? No questions. Want to declare public hearing open. Want to open for a public comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Second.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post subvention? Next item.
Take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is to receive an update on the city's diversity and inclusion efforts.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to give you an update on our diversity audit and inclusion strategy. I'll give you a little background first. In February, on February 22nd, 2017, the community asked the council for a diversity report. Staff prepared an in-house report and presented that to council in May 2017. Subsequently, council formed an ad hoc committee and requested that we do a formal RFP. In December 13th, 2017, we, council authorized a contract with Miller Law Group, as well as some subconsultants to conduct a diversity audit and inclusion strategy. And Miller conducted the following. They audited the city's policies, practices and procedures. They developed and implemented an organizational and cultural workplace survey. They conducted an analysis of the city's job groups, workforce composition and current composition, and they developed an inclusion strategy. On August 22nd, staff presented those findings to the city council. The audit did not uncover any obvious barriers to diversity or inclusion, nor did the statistical analyses reveal evidence of discrimination in the city's workforce demographics, recruitment processes or compensation practices. But it did identify opportunities for enhancing diversity and inclusion and staff committed to reporting back in approximately six months, and that's tonight. So tonight I'm going to go over our efforts since 2018. This is just kind of an overview of what we're going to talk about. Our GARE involvement, GARE is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. We're going to talk about personal rules and regulation updates that we've conducted. We're going to talk about changes in our recruiting process. We're going to talk about our inclusion strategy and our community involvement. So GARE, as I mentioned, is the government race and alliance, the government alliance on race and equity. There's nine staff members that are attending and we're a part of a Northern California cohort, along with the city of Sacramento, the Cosumna CSD and some other counties in the region. And we're learning techniques to have specific discussions, policies and decision-making centered around race, specifically around race as well. And, and we're going to learn how to implement a racial equity tool for projects and decision-making. Regarding our personal rules and regulations, we updated our EEO statement language. With our harassment, discrimination and retaliation section, we changed the location in the personal rules and regulations to move it up further in the document to make it seem more important. It was at the back of the document previously. We firm up the language in that section and we included a supervisor responsibility section. Regarding announcement of vacancies, we updated the definition of best interest of the city. Regarding qualifications, the city no longer requests criminal history information on initial applications. Regarding background checks, we updated to reflect that they will be done following a conditional offer of employment. Regarding medical demotion, transfer, termination or retirement, we updated language regarding interactive process and ADA. Regarding our affirmative action program language, that was removed as it's not required. Regarding employment of relatives, this language remained consistent with the prior wording as it was determined sufficient. Regarding transgender employment, the EEO policy was updated to include protections based on transgender status. In regard in the California Pay, the California Fair Pay Act, it was updated so no prior salary histories included in job applications. These are some of the updates to the city's recruiting process. We've removed applicants' names throughout the recruiting process. So when the subject matter expert and a pre-screening HR staff member sees an application for the first time, they don't see a name, they see a number. The first time a name is introduced as, at the interview process, at the interview of the individual. We've incorporated bias training for all interview panel members. We've expanded recruitment efforts for persons with disabilities, veterans and women's base groups. We've developed a stronger documentation process throughout the recruitment process for both HR and hiring personnel staff. New employees are now required to review and acknowledge the city's New employees are now required to review and acknowledge the city's personal rules and regulations, city's EEO and harassment policies with separate acknowledgements that they read them. And we revised our EEO questions and reports to include all categories. Regarding our inclusion strategy, council directed an, an inclusion leader, which is myself. We've established a 16, now 18-member team that's cross-departmental, that's diverse, that meets two times a month. We've entered into a training contract with Fog Break Justice. As you remember, they're, they were one of the subconsultants to Miller Law Group. The chief formed his community advisory board as a resource for strategies, community placing concepts, and increasing public awareness. We began utilizing the city's social media outlets in more diverse and inclusive ways, and we created a campaign hashtag called "A City Welcome to All." In November, uh, 2018, 30 staff participated with the CSD on a class called Foundations of Cultural Competence. In December, we had 115 staff members participate in focus groups on what's the value of diversity. In January, we worked with staff to begin to create, uh, focused vision and value statements. So we had an in-person session with 70 staff. And then in February, we had a webinar to continue that vision and value discussion, and we had 45 staff participate in the webinar. And then we emailed out the edit, the edited live webinar to all staff, so everyone had the opportunity to participate. We'll be working to refine the vision and value statements with our diversity inclusion team, as well as the city's executive leadership team. We're going to be finalizing a new employee buddy program to welcome new employees to the city. And we're going to be having a series of required procedural justice implicit bias trainings in April and May, as well as a discussion on gender equity. So some of our community involvement, we sponsored the inaugural Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Legacy Pancake Breakfast on January 19th with the CSD, the NAACP, as well as local and regional leaders that helped pull that breakfast together. We participated in MLK 365 March and Diversity Expo. We hosted the Festival of Lights on October 30th. We hosted the Lunar New Year on February 1st, and we held Black History Month, Black History Month Celebration Events at council chambers. We're, we're working closer with the CSD on future cultural and diversity-related events. So what are our next steps? We want to continue to prioritize the inclusion strategy elements. We still need to determine our long-term staff training strategy. We want to hold two community-focused meetings. One is going to be called Community Night, and one is going to be a leadership luncheon. We want to continue our work with GARE, the GARE program. We want to finalize our vision and value statements and create department-specific mission statements that feed into the vision and values. And we want to conduct future staff surveys. So the next part that I'm going to talk about is kind of some of our numbers. So, the first slide in front of you, this is, this is from the April/May 2000 staff-driven report that came to council. The top bar is city employees, and the bottom bar are city residents. So as you can see on the top bar, 63% of our staff were Caucasian. 37% of our residents are Caucasian. So I just kind of want you to see kind of where we started. So this is a snapshot of our workforce in April/May 2017. Uh, so 63% are white, 37% are non-white. Regarding, um, gender, at that same time in April/May 2017, our city employees, 36% were males, 64% were females. For our community, 49% are, were males, and 51% were females. So this is kind of that snapshot two years ago. So these next two slides are going to be kind of a two-year look at our new hire breakdown from April 2017 to April 2019. As you can see, we hired, we've hired 80 staff since that time. 51% of those staff have been white, 49 have been non-white, and then there's the ethnic breakdown in the table. The next slide is the gender breakdown over the same time period of April 2017 to April 2019, and we had a 50/50 split with males and females. So the next slide is if you want to see a six-month, um, breakout since we came to council last in August. We've hired 27 employees, so it's a much smaller sample, but we've hired, um, 52% of our hires have been white, 48% have been non-white. And the ethnic breakdown is in the table as well. And then the gender in that same time period of pretty much just the last six months, uh, 44% of the hires have been female, and 56% have been male. So I just kind of wanted to give you a snapshot of kind of what the, the city workforce looked like two years ago, and kind of our efforts in, um, in our new hire efforts. So why are we doing this? We know we want to increase our staff diversity in all categories, race, ethnicity, gender, income, sexual orientation, disability. We're also focused on changing our internal organizational culture to be more inclusive of all staff. And we're doing these efforts with the involvement and leadership of our city staff members, and it's really being driven by the staff. And I do want to just reiterate that all of these efforts take time. We're only six months into this, so I feel like we have a lot to be proud of, but we still have a lot to, uh, we have a lot to accomplish in the future. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Cara, on the, uh, meeting that you held January of this year, uh, with Fog Break Justice and Berkey Brown, is that to craft visions and values for the organization? Is that what the, the employees were tasked to?
That is, that is, um, different than the city council, like, vision and imperatives. These are city staff, um, vision and values. For, for city staff reflective inside of our organization.
Okay, and then I, you mentioned that you have missions specific to certain departments, so the visions and values will be overarching for all departments, and then there would be?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the second question is, on the, um, the emailed version of the live webinar, asking for feedback, did you get good response from that? Does this seem like an issue that, um, other city employees are, are buying into and participating and providing good feedback?
Yeah, on the, on the, on the email. You know, we got, I think we had about 15 people that participated in the, in the emailed portion, um, and I think that's okay, because what was more important to me is that every single person at the city, regardless of your shift, if you work a graveyard shift and you couldn't come in for, um, you know, a three-and-a-half-hour vision and value session, that you had the opportunity to do it at your desk or to do it at home. So we didn't have a ton of participation, but it's more important that we allow the opportunity for anyone who wanted to participate to participate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, questions? All right, Councilwoman?
Uh, thanks, Cara. This is, this is good information. I just thought you might want to, um, to inform the, uh, the rest of the council and the folks, in addition to all this, what the multicultural committee is getting ready, you were talking about, barking on.
Yeah. Yeah, so last night, um, yeah, I guess I could have mentioned that, but last night we had a meeting with, uh, Mayor Lee and council members, who, with the multicultural committee members, it was really productive. We talked to them about really expanding their scope and making them more of, um, diversity-inclusion ambassadors in the community, and I will say that they embraced the conversation. There were eight of the 10 of them there, um, so I'm going to report back to them that there may be with, um, a potential new resolution with, uh, modified duties for them to consider. They had requested of staff to, um, change their name from a committee to a commission, so eventually we'll kind of work out some of these details and then return to the council for you to, to take formal action on that. But it was really productive, and they seemed very open to doing, um, pretty much three things. They want to work on educating the community, um, regarding, uh, diversity inclusion, multiculturalism. They want to, uh, be ambassadors at events, more than they are now, and they want to kind of create a feedback loop with the city council, so when they're out there talking to residents, they can kind of come back and, um, discuss what they're hearing and, um, and be a resource for the community. So it's not just the council members, but it's also the 10 members of the multicultural committee.
Yeah, exciting to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? No? I do have a question. With the new hires, um, taking into consideration with the current, uh, breakdown of the city employees, how does that look?
Like an overall number?
Yeah, overall number.
Uh, you know, I don't actually have that. I have, I have what our organization looked like and our new hires since, but I can certainly provide that to you.
Yeah, I think that would be useful. Um, so, you know, that's what I was looking for, you know, something that shows, uh, you know, obviously the progress and the response, um, and the effort, uh, is notable, but, um, I want to know where we're at right now, uh, whether, how close we are, whether we need to increase activities in certain communities, uh, or not. So, if you can generate something like that and forward it to the council, that'd be great.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay. No other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Right, uh, this time, want to open for a public comment. We have one member of the, actually, two. First speaker is, uh, Umer Sherghil. Uh, second speaker is Maureen Craft.
Good evening, Umer Sherghil, Elk Grove, father of three. Before I talk about this subject, I just thank, uh, Councilmember Wen for, uh, your work on that jobs program in the summer, and, uh, to, uh, our police chief for all your, for your service, it's sad to see you go. And, um, also, I'd like to thank all of you for the hard work you do. I know you put in a lot of time, but I, I do have some issues to raise here. I know that, um, Cara, Ms. Reddick has done a lot of hard work, but it's possible to do a lot of hard work and say the right things, and for us to still, uh, be able to find some avenues for criticism. And one of the things that I want to note upfront is that if we are asking the city to be more diverse and to present a report regarding our diversity program, how about the presenters be diverse? There's an issue when we are not handing off responsibility for our diversity program to people that are diverse. When we ask, we don't ask people of color to have responsibility for the city and the program that's asking them to buy into. And, and I think we need to recognize these problems. There was a problem in 2017 when we advised you, and we found through the, uh, survey that the city of Elk Grove was not hiring people of color representing the diversity of the community, that we had, uh, more, uh, people of color, um, when they were hired, were paid less. Women, when they were hired, were paid less than other, um, city employees. And in 2018, it was a problem, and it continues to be a problem. When we did the survey in, in 2018, we found that African-Americans and Hispanics were not happy with the status of diversity as it's handled in the city of Elk Grove. And we see, we have a six-month report here, but we don't have any objective indicators. We have some nice words, some nice programs. But when I spoke with, um, staff a couple of days ago, when they gave the report to the city and to, um, citizens, they had not included or even looked at any objective indicators of what is improving or what's not. And the new hires, the numbers, the only numbers that we have now, the new hires show that we continue to hire, less than half of the people are people of color. We continue, when we hire people of color, they're paid less. When we hire women, they're paid less, even now, a year and a half after, we've looked at this problem. And it's not just, you know, a city's, uh, problem. I, I want to bring up an issue regarding, uh, the council. I think you can't hand this off to city staff. You need to provide leadership. When you have an opportunity to hire, to put people in place that are diverse, you need to do that. A year ago, we had a planning commission, uh, opportunity to fill vacancies in the planning commission, and this council created a planning commission that had no people of color, that had one woman. You told this community that there was not one person of color that was qualified that could sit on the planning commission. I'm going to finish up real quick. Mayor Lee gave the city an opportunity. He gave the council an opportunity by putting forward very qualified people to be on the planning commission a year ago. Now, that night, you said, "We don't want, or we don't have, or we're not going to, um, have a planning commission with people of color." But since then, over a year, we still haven't found a way to remedy that. So when you ask the city staff, "What are you doing on diversity?", you need to take a, a close look at what leadership you're provising.
Thirty seconds is up.
And, and I'll finish. If you want them to lead, you also need to lead. Thank you.
All right, uh, next speaker is Maureen Craft.
I just wanted to, um, have some points of clarification, maybe from Cara. I know when we, uh, met as the ad hoc committee, um, with both of the council members, Hume and Nguyen, um, about, um, hiring consultants, we said that we were going to have the training component as a separate bidding contract. Did we send that out to bid? Because I, it was never, um, talked about, or the ad hoc committee was never informed that there was going to be, um, training components, um, being hired for some of the topics that we discussed. So, and, and we can discuss it another time, but I just wanted to know if that was put out to bid.
No, I, I think it's fine, I can respond. So, through the RFP process, um, we, uh, looked at the, the proposals that came in. Miller Law Group was ultimately selected, and we decided to not do the training component at that time until we found the results of the, um, audit.
Mm-huh.
Um, and then, once that was completed, we, we felt that the Fog Break Justice, who was the subconsultants under Miller, Miller Law Group, would be a good fit. So, um, it essentially part, I guess we did not re, um, bring that RFP group together, but it was part of the original consultant selected.
I get it. But as we had discussed in our meeting, we discussed that we would get the results, and then we would look at some of the, some of the areas of training that were needed, and we would put those, um, we would put that, uh, training back out to bid. So that was what we discussed as a group. So, um, I, I would definitely like to see some of the training go back out to bid in a couple of different areas. I think that would, um, not only be fair to some of the, um, participants who were part of the original bidding, uh, process, who didn't necessarily provide the overall, um, the overall areas of collecting the information, but would be great, um, diverse, um, consultants, um, to give us training across the board. So I, I would just like for that to be revisited. Um, I would also, um, have to object to the multicultural committee being part of a diversity and inclusion, uh, system. I mean, diversity and inclusion is very serious. It is a position that is, um, usually a hired position, and if that per, if you wanted to hire somebody in a diversity and inclusion, um, capacity, I think that would be a great recommendation for the city to look at a Director of Diversity and Inclusion. Sacramento, uh, city just hired, I think, a diversity and inclusion manager last year, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, it is something that we continue to talk about, and I think that we need to bring someone in as an expert. I, I don't know how diverse our, um, multicultural committee is, but it is not some, it is not a topic that you just send out to a multicultural committee, of people who are not involved in diversity and inclusion as a whole, as it relates to staff and employment and those types of things. I think what you should really look at is hiring someone who is a diversity and inclusion expert, either bring them in as a, in a bidding process to be a consultant if, if there is not enough funds for a full-time position. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, there are no additional speakers, so we want to close public oppo, uh, common opportunity, and council direction and direction. No? Members, anything to offer?
Yeah, uh, thank you for the report, Cara. Obviously, this is an iterative process, uh, ongoing. I think we, we've dipped our toe in the pool at this point. Uh, Maureen makes, uh, some good points as far as that there's a wealth of talent out there to still be considered. But I just want to specify, as I recall the discussions at the meetings, what we chose to do was to bifurcate out the training from the whole package, so that, uh, the respondents could, could either reply for one of the items or both of the items. And as I remember, Fog Break Justice included in the original RFP proposal what their rates and terms would be for the training component. So we just rolled that through a- and accepted that original, uh, do you remember that going down that way?
Yeah, and I think that was actually Fog Break's, um, recommendation as well, too, is when we came to them, because it seemed like we didn't need everything that they had suggested, so we broke it out into the pieces that we have here.
Councilwoman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to take a moment to, because it might not be clear for others as well, but to address, um, Ms. Craft's comment about the multicultural committee. It was not intended to, uh, mean that the committee was going to take on something of more, you know, that might require, you know, some professional training. It was simply adding on to some of the things that, uh, Ms. Reddick highlighted in her report, went with the Martin Luther King Breakfast and, and the efforts that were going forward. There's a, basically, a growing, if you will, spirit that the co- committee's choosing to take on, and I think that, you know, there, there are additional efforts and willingness to embark on this. I think it's positive for the overall, uh, the overall spirit of, of the city and the culture that we're establishing here. That's all. That's all.
Yeah. Yeah, um, and Ms. Craft, the, the only thing additional that I'd like to add to that is, I understand where you're coming from, uh, but, um, in, in my conversation with the, uh, current multicultural committee, um, I had
I did not challenge them to be the substitution for a diversity and inclusion coordinator or a director, or somebody in that capacity. It was more along the lines of what council member Soon has indicated, which is raising the bar so that they could be a resource for council members, in the event that we have additional conversation and additional events or things in which they can be engaged in. I think some of the things that you've, you've mentioned specifically in terms of the technical, you know, strategies, I think I would be in agreement with you, Ms. Craft, that there needs to be expertise that needs to be brought in. But what I am curious, and I had a conversation with staff earlier, is, and I recognize that Sacramento City has a diversity inclusion manager. What I'm curious is, what does that look like on a daily basis? And I think that this may be our opportunity, Kara, to kind of study that, and see how, in the event that the council goes in that direction, how we would include that manager or that director and their engagement with the various departments and the various community. So, my feeling here is, this is good progress. You know, thank you for the report, Kara, but obviously, there's a lot of things that need to happen. And as a council, as a mayor, I think that as we move forward, we need to have this regular dialogue, and it's very productive. So, you know, thank you, Mr. Shergill. Thank you, Ms. Craft, for providing that.
Mr. Mayor, I want to add that, that director, the inclusion, diversity and inclusion manager that the city of Sacramento hired, it took over a year and a half for them to find the individual they have now, which recently just started, and they were still trying to figure out what the duties of this individual is going to do. And I know that because I work with the city of Sacramento on this, and I serve a very diverse population, and it was around, how do we work with you as a community-based organization? How do we work with the different population and the different communities in the city of Sacramento? But, you know, again, Sacramento has 5,000 employees, right? It's a little different. So, I get that maybe we can work with the city of Sacramento and try to figure that out, but we also, our population here is a little different than Sacramento. Our makeup is a little different here in Sacramento, so I, I think it's good to, to check in with them, but also understand that it took a while for the city of Sacramento to, to get to this individual that they hired.
It does salary, too.
Yeah. Councilmember Detrick?
Yeah, Kara, you know, thanks for taking the time with that. I know you've also consulted with some other corporations that have diversity and inclusion managers to get some ideas how they go about doing some of the things they do. I think the other option, I wouldn't be in favor of hiring somebody at this point. I would be in favor of looking at a consultant to come up with some ideas and, you know, that you use it and put together a program and assist you with that. But to hire somebody full-time, I don't, I don't think that, at this point, we're not at that place.
I would like to just mention that we, part of the contract with Fogbreak Justice is a consulting component, so they are available for us to consult.
Yeah, that, I think that's a great, great mechanism.
I would like to mention one more thing that I failed to in my presentation. I'd like to thank the efforts of Jackie Langenberg, our human resource manager and her staff. They put a lot of work into the elements before you tonight.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, receiving file.
All right, receiving file. Next item.
Takes on to item 10.2, which is to receive the traffic congestion management plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jeff Warner. I'm the engineering services manager for the Public Works Department. Before I get started on the congestion management plan, I wanted to address Council Vice Mayor Humes' comments regarding the Emerald Vista Crossing. We, since we talked to Ms. Kalava last week, we were, we did a little bit more investigation, coordinated with our operations and maintenance division, and found that we had some salvaged material, rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon available from Harbor Point, where we went to an overhead system. So, we're going to work with O and M to try to get that installed here relatively quickly. It may take several weeks. We got to pour foundation, set it up, and get it going, but we were able to identify some spare materials, and we're going to go ahead and put it out there.
That's fast work.
That's right. So, the next item, 10.2, is a presentation on the traffic congestion management plan. So, Elk Grove's population and economy are increasing. Our travel demand forecasts show that congestion is going to increase citywide. A future roadway network based on the constraints of the general plan, the number of lanes, will be insufficient to support travel demand in the future. In other words, we can't simply build our way out of the congestion challenges we face in the future. Therefore, a variety of strategies are needed to improve the efficiency and reliability of the transportation network. This slide shows the existing roadway traffic conditions. This data and information is taken directly from the general plan, as a result of the traffic analysis performed with the general plan update. As you can see, there are only a couple of roads that don't meet the performance targets identified in the general plan, and there are several other roads that are approaching that performance target. So, the picture today is not, not quite as bad as some people may think. Yes, sir?
Just a clarification, Jeff, can you, when you say "performance target," are you talking a level of service?
So, previously, it was level of service. With the recently adopted general plan update, we've gone to a performance target-based system. Those performance targets are very closely tied to the thresholds that were established previously under the level of performance criteria.
So, for the people out there, and all of us, how does it feel to be green, or yellow, or red? I mean, is that?
That's a good question. It probably feels different for you than it may for me, or for, for somebody else, but it's associated with delay, right? Level of performance, as you very well know, is tied to a measure of delay. So, you know, I'm not quite sure how to answer that question. Maybe Bob can?
I'd say if you're in a, if you're in a red area, it's probably somewhat equivalent to level of service E and F. Yellow is somewhere near a level of service D, and green is A, B, and C.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Still pretty bad.
Sure.
And I'd just like to point out that the largest area of red that you see there on Elk Grove Florin Road, that, believe it or not, that service performance target to not be met was by design in order to preserve the oak trees down there.
Sure, Elk Grove Park, the high school, so there may be some issues there. So, wait for it, though. Here's, here's the next one. This is what it looks like at general plan buildout. So, when I said that the roadway, the roadway network wasn't sufficient to handle our, our future needs, this is what I meant by that. So, you see a significant increase in the number of roads that don't meet the performance targets, other roads that are approaching the target. So, that level of service E and F and level of service D into the future. So, with that, the traffic congestion management plan organizes, provides some solutions, and it organizes the various congestion management strategies identified by the Public Works Department into a single document. It provides trackable milestones for achieving the city's traffic management goals, and it prioritizes major roadways for congestion relief improvements. Some of the constraints associated with the traffic congestion management plan include the fact that projects and initiatives identified within the plan are subject to the availability and authorization of funds. Not all of the projects in there are codified in the, in the capital program or any other authorized document, budget, perhaps. The capacity improvements are limited by the general plan and other policy documents such as the rural roads policy. We received some, an inquiry from our friends in the rural area, Mr. Lee Peters and Dan Best. They had some concern that perhaps this plan was identifying improvements beyond what's allowed by the rural roads policy. We were able to reach out to them and clarify that it does not. It is constrained by those policies, and in fact, there's a green sheet that was circulated that has additional language that we propose to add to the plan to clarify that. It also is not a guarantee to eliminate all congestion. The plan is divided into seven categories. The projects identified are in seven categories ranging from roadway improvements, such as roadway widening, installation of new traffic signals, to the more technology-based improvements such as intelligent transportation systems and congestion engineering studies. Within each section of the plan, each of these seven sections, the plan identifies the accomplishments, the achievements that we've made to date, as well as the achievements that we look to implement going into the future. I won't go through all of those, so I'll let you guys take a look at that. But, moving on, as I mentioned earlier, the plan also prioritizes efforts. It focuses on major roadways that provide access throughout the city to freeways and to neighboring jurisdictions. The segments listed here, several of these were shown in that, that future forecast as being, not meeting the performance targets. And again, these are east-west and north-south major arterials. This is what the, what the efforts would be focused. Next, I'd like to dive, or highlight some of the key improvements identified within each of those seven sections mentioned previously. First, roadway improvements. The plan identifies several roadway improvements, several projects that are, that are coming up near term. It is not an exhaustive list of all of the projects that are included in the roadway fee program or general plan, but nonetheless, it does have some projects that are more near term. First up, the Camaro Road Extension. The project is proposed to construct four lanes from I-5 to Highway 99. It would be constructed in phases due to funding constraints. Phase one of that project would create, construct two lane, divided two-lane road, as opposed to the existing two-lane road, with narrow lanes that exist today, from Lent Ranch Parkway to Big Horn Boulevard. Phase two would be that same divided road from Big Horn to Bruceville. Now, we originally planned to start construction on phase one next year, because funding wasn't identified for phase two, but our capital program staff has recently, they think they've identified a viable funding source for phase two. So, the goal would be to accelerate the design of phase two, try to package those projects together, and hopefully, if all works out well, begin construction on phase one and two as early as late next year. Grantline Road widening phase two would construct four lanes from Waterman Road to Bradshaw Road with traffic signals at Mosher and Bradshaw. That is also scheduled to bring, begin construction next year. And then, they have the Whitlock Parkway at Highway 99 interchange. This would add an interchange between Elkhorn Boulevard and Grantline Road. This is currently, the project currently only funded for environmental design. Capital program staff is actively pursuing other funding opportunities, grants, so on and so forth. Next set of projects are ones that are not currently identified in the capital program, but a little bit more near term than, than others that are not identified in the capital program. The first two on the list, Bruceville Road widening, six lanes from Laguna to Sheldon, as well as the Lots Parkway extension, are proposed with the next capital program update. These would have, of these four listed on this slide, they would have the most immediate benefits to congestion relief, whereas the other two are in the southeast policy area and would have more benefits when, when that area begins to develop. So, as I mentioned earlier, we're not going to be able to build our way out. So, that was, those were the roadway improvements identified in the plan, but these next several sections focus on the, the technology side, what, improving the efficiency and reliability of the transportation network. First up is the intelligent transportation system component. The, the most important project, we think, we've identified is expansion of our traffic communication network and increasing the bandwidth. In other words, installing a fiber-optic, city-wide fiber-optic network. Our current system, signal interconnect communication system, where we collect all of our high-resolution traffic video data, signal data, is composed primarily of copper. A fiber-optic network is needed to increase bandwidth and improve monitoring capabilities. I think, you know, we're trying to squeeze a ton of high-resolution data through these old copper lines. It's, it's not working out too well. The estimated cost to build out that fiber network is approximately $15 million. Unfortunately, there's, there's no dedicated funding source identified for that at the moment, and there's very limited grant fund opportunities available for, for fiber grants. That said, we were successful in receiving $830,000 through SECOG. This grant will, will help finance a project that will install some fiber optic hubs. What these hubs will allow us to do is to connect more signals to our existing fiber. We do have some fiber that's running between here and the corporation yard, and we have only four signals connected to that fiber-optic system currently. This hub project will allow us to connect an additional dozen intersections, as well as the cameras that exist there. It will also push out the termination point for the copper, meaning that, whereas the copper runs here to City Hall and our traffic management center, you know, the longer we carry that high-resolution data over that copper, the less, you know, less throughput, right? So, we terminate that copper at further distance from the city, pick up those fiber optic lines. We anticipate this would increase our throughput currently by more than double, and, and perhaps as much as five times more, just this project alone. So, if you, if you do implement that fiber loop throughout the city, you can see how much better that might, or hopefully, you can see how much better that might look. The next project under intelligent transportation systems would be to upgrade all of our traffic, our vehicle detection infrastructure to video detection. We currently use induction loops, as has been historically done. The added benefits for video detection compared to loop detection is that you can better detect bicycles and motorcycles at the intersection. Sometimes I have our time picking up, you know, fiber, fiberglass bikes, or whatever. The, it allows us to also collect more accurate turning movement count data. We can collect some data with the loops, but it doesn't tell us which direction the vehicle's going, and sometimes those are unreliable. So, with video detection, you see the car, you see which direction it goes, you know exactly where those movements are occurring. It also allows us to avoid replacement of the loops, which can become expensive when we reconstruct roads. The total cost to upgrade, the remaining 127 traffic signals to video detection is estimated at $5 million. Again, there's no dedicated funding source identified for this. However, we, we would like to think that we would be able to convert a, a lot of our, our signals to video in conjunction with capital program and maintenance projects. Next is congestion and engineering studies. The primary focus here would be to upgrade our signal coordination plans for our major east-west and north-south arterials. We have a couple of projects currently funded in the, in the capital improvement program. Both of them would address signal coordination improvements for Elkhorn Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard slash Bond Road. The first project, which we're, we're working on getting a contract in place now to start work on this project, would be from Bruceville Road to Elkhorn Florin Road for both of those corridors. And then, the next project, which is funded in, in the next fiscal year, would be Bruceville to I-5. So, essentially, we would be focusing on coordination all the way, I-5, all the way to Elkhorn Florin Road for Elkhorn Boulevard and Laguna Bond. Next are improvements to our traffic management center. We have, with implementation of fiber and increased data capacity, we would have the opportunity to implement automated traffic signal performance measures. What this allows us to do is proactive evaluation of traffic signal performance and apply solutions more readily in real time. We're able to do some of that now, but this would take that to the next level. The complete implementation costs are unknown, so we have proposed in, in next fiscal year, in the upcoming budget for the next fiscal year, a pilot program to study the benefits and the costs and effectiveness of the AT-SPM, Automated Traffic Signal Performance Measures. We also are, have included in the budget for the next two fiscal years, expanded hours for the traffic management center. This would, right now, we're eight to five. This would go from seven to six to encompass the initial and closing hours of the, of the two peak periods of the day. And finally, is the state of good repair. All these upgrades to technology don't mean much if you're not maintaining it in, in good order. So, first up is a traffic signal battery backup maintenance program. We currently, the operational life of a battery backup system, which kicks in if the, if the power goes out and signal stops working, we want that signal to come back on. Those are replaced over a five-year cycle, so we, we're within that operational life. The traffic sign program, we have approximately 20,000 regulatory signs. They're replaced over a 10-year cycle. And lastly, upgrading traffic signal controllers. I think, I may have said this at the retreat, but traffic signal controllers are the brains behind the traffic operation system. They allow us to do things like automated traffic signal performance measures, collect data, transmit data, tell the signal what to do from remotely from the traffic management center. So, a new maintenance program was started this fiscal year for upgrading controllers over a 10-year cycle. Currently have 149 signals, so that would be approximately 15 new controllers per year at an annual cost of about $75,000. If we want to do, do it all now, we have about 112 controllers that are in need or are ready for an upgrade. The one-time cost for that would be about $560,000. So, that concludes my presentation of the plan, but I'd like to close by saying, when we were putting this plan together, we thought it was really important to identify, well, exactly this, the fact that, in the future, our traffic congestion is going to get much worse. The, the problem is, you know, while this plan identifies what we think are the solutions, there's no funding available for it at the moment. And so, while staff is proactive, we seek out grant opportunities. They're few and far between. A lot of our, a lot of our, our efforts are focused on roadway capacity increasing projects, and that's great, but again, we're, we're not going to be able to build our way out of this thing. So, just keep that in mind as we put plans forward and, and move forward with our traffic congestion issues. With that, I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
Yep.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yep. If they looked at using any cellphone technology, the way that like Waze and SigAlert and Google does, to, they, by the, somehow, they were able to track the congestion levels at different places.
Sure, those are, those are, you know, just taking input from users, right?
No, I think, I think it, it's act, I think it actually knows by the speed of the GPS based on the phones.
So, fortunately, I brought backup. I have someone here who may know a little bit more than me in that category. I'm not as familiar with the Waze and how that all works.
I was just wondering if that's something that could, is, is your, is your design and your technology that may, if there's a service or something. Ryan, do you have a comment on that? Ryan, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah. So SECOG has been looking at partnering with Waze or Google or some of those other services to try to bring some of that data into the region for our use, and I have been tracking those efforts. It is something we are looking at, but there really isn't a vehicle to get there today.
Okay, because, I mean, they're obviously already using it within the city. They're taking, they're taking that data, because that's where they're, when they reroute and everything else. Just be interesting to see if there'd be a way to incorporate that into our intelligent system.
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
Councilman?
Yeah. Thank you. Along those lines, and I think it's great you guys are going down this path, but along those lines, have you considered another way of, to your point about not being able to build our way out of it, looked at, you know, the ride share, bike share, you know, finding ways for to pull us off the roads and period?
Sure. The plan does identify some strategies relative to alternative modes. BRT is in there, it's listed in there, and we'd love to implement some transit. There are trail projects listed in there as well under the alternative mode section. You know, unfortunately, those don't have as big of the capacity, I'm sorry, the congestion relief that one may think. They help, but, you know, the totality of them, I don't think is going to get us where we need to be as much as perhaps the technology piece, the more efficient, effective management of the system, getting the throughput with the signal connections.
Yeah. No, you got to do it all, I agree, but I'm glad to-
So those are identified within the plan, absolutely. We considered that.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions?
Thank you.
This time, we want to open for public comment. We have one speaker sign up to speak. Ms. Lynn Wheat, come on up.
I want to thank staff for a wonderful report and for actually being honest. I've done some research on video detection. As I believe before we spend 5.1 million on 127 intersections with the belief that this is our traffic solution, we may want to consider a $100,000 feasibility study. A published 2001 paper describes the City of Colorado Springs' decision to switch to all video detection. This paper offered 12 suggestions, with one being, "Don't oversell the project to politicians or the public. It replaces loops. It doesn't fix bad signal timing." The Office of Operations for Federal Transportation describes various traffic control systems and includes charts with pros and cons on the systems and cost of each system with video detection being the most expensive. Research completed by Purdue University School of Engineering in 2006 did not recommend video detection systems. San Luis Obispo discusses their video detection and states, "Though video detection systems are very reliable, they sometimes do have errors." In 2018, UCD and DRI have developed a new type of out-of-pavement base on laser technology. There is a hybrid video radar detection, which might work well with our hybrid land use planning. Reno has been removing video detection. I recently returned from a city similar to our size and experienced several intersections with video detection. Fifteen cars were in the left turn lane, and only eight-four were able to turn before the signal changed. I've asked staff about our current video detection intersections. How are they working? Any stats on effectiveness at moving the traffic? Are they bitter at moving our traffic? Are we going to be hiring more staff for our traffic command center? I submitted not all copies to you, but since the plan acknowledges that there are fiscal constraints of implementation, the plan needs to add a fourth goal to the goal section on page five. It should read, "Identifying and Collect Fees at the Time of New Development to Offset the Traffic Impacts Caused by the Development." Then the following objectives need to be added for that goal. Objective 4.1: Ensure that the true cost of traffic impacts caused by new development is accurately quantified and incorporated into new development impact fee structure. Objective 4.2: Ensure that the city maintains an accurate NEXUS study that supports ongoing traffic impact mitigation, cost resulting from new development, including capital equipment, maintenance, and labor costs. Finally, as an addendum to all of this, since you have continued to set policies adopting overriding considerations for traffic impact is the primary cause of our traffic congestion, and it was determined that the economic development benefits justified the traffic. Isn't it true that the traffic, that the congestion management measures outlined in the plan are simply like rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic? And again, I want to thank staff for their efforts because they have to work with the policies that you've established, and one is overriding considerations. Thank you.
All right. We have no additional speakers, so we want to close public comment. And anything else, members? Receiving file?
Yeah, I just want to commend staff for their work, too, and we got to keep vigilant on this, so thank you.
Yeah. Thank you much. All right. Let's adjourn this meeting at 8:31 PM. Thank you.